Ladies and gentlemen, we call this meeting in order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for May 28, 2019. Can I get the roll call, please?
The only person not in attendance is Commissioner Braun. Let the record show that we do have a four in present.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, God. I ask that you watch over our elected body and continue to lead us in a Christ-like way, God. I ask that you watch over our police department, our EMS and fire department, as well as our troops serving here and abroad, God. Be with us as we're here tonight and as we leave here this evening. In Jesus' name, amen. First on the agenda is a reporting of an executive session from May 21, 2019. Calvin, do you have that?
Yes. The Mayor and Commissioners met in executive session on May 21 at 6:30 PM. The meeting took place on the second floor of Town Hall. A motion to open the meeting was made by Commissioner Arthenreth, seconded by Commissioner Warnock. The members present, that vote passed three to zero with Arthenreth, Pearson, and Warnock voting in favor of opening the meeting. Marion was present. Let the record also reflect that Commissioner Braun was not able to attend the meeting, but called in by phone. She is not eligible to vote on any matters that is not marked as present for the meeting, but let the record reflect that she did participate by phone. Motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Pearson. That motion passed three to zero. The reason for the executive session is provided for in accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act titled Governmental Provisions, Article Subtitle 3-02 Meetings, Section 3-305B. This meeting was closed in order to discuss, one, personnel. The second reason was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. And the third reason was to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. The meeting, there were no action items taken at the meeting, but a motion was made to seal the minutes of the meeting as provided for by the Maryland Open Meetings Act by Commissioner Pearson and seconded by Commissioner Warnock. That vote was three to zero. A motion was made to leave executive session by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Warnock. That motion passed three to zero. And a meeting, a motion was made by Commissioner Pearson, seconded by Commissioner Arthenreth to adjourn the meeting. That vote passed three to zero, and the meeting was adjourned at 9:34 PM.
Thank you. First on our public presentations is an appointment of our police department chaplain, chief.
Police officers face an extraordinary amount of stress on the job. Mental health services are a crucial component of officer wellness. It is vital for a police department to maintain a robust offering of programs to keep law enforcement officers mentally fit. One of these services is the use of a police chaplain. A police chaplain serves as support system for law enforcement in times of crisis. They can be volunteers or sworn officers. They come from all faiths and are fully ordained. Some hold degrees and certifications in mental health treatment. Mr. Andrew Goings was identified by me as a perfect fit for our agency as a police chaplain. As you all know, and many of you have met him in the past, he has a great personality. As you saw, he walked in the door, and everyone wants to talk to him, laugh and joke with him. But when it gets time for seriousness, he is a person I want shoulder to shoulder with. I want to be shoulder to shoulder with. He's a graduate of Hartford Tech. He holds a degree from Covington Theological Seminary on Religious Education. He's currently finishing his degree on theology. He holds several certifications in studies, Christian apologetics, worldview, Bible, life coaching. He's a very young gentleman, and when I tell you he was a senior pastor for four years, it makes you stop and wonder. And you all will see once you get a chance to talk to him. Currently, he is the associate pastor at Pleasantview Baptist Church in Port Deposit. He is married to his wife, Casey. She's here in the back. And her two, their two sons, Nate and Emmett. I'd like to introduce you all to Andrew Goings.
We are honored tonight to appoint you as our official police chaplain. I know on behalf of the Rising Sun Police Department and the Town of Rising Sun that we are all very excited to have you as a part of our family. So with that said, we're going to go ahead and give you this appointment and then that as well. And chief?
You guys want to look at Jane?
All right. If you want to say some words, Andrew, you can.
Well, I want to thank you for recognizing me, especially with Chief. Him and I've had many coffees, as well as the Mayor and I chatted about a host of different things and the possibilities of this coming to fruition. And it's amazing the timing in which it came to fruition, especially the first time out on the job being that of a police involved shooting. And so that was definitely a unique opportunity to serve my community. I enjoy serving my community in the capacity in which I do, and I think it a great honor having even police officers in my family to be able to serve police officers and to help them in the trauma in which they face. It's definitely a very serious thing that they face, being majority of the time they face something called secondary trauma, which is somebody else's trauma that they have to deal with. And they've got to learn how to deal with that emotionally, mentally, and spiritually. And it's my job to assist the chief in this police department in doing a job well done and representing this community and this body in the greatest way and greatest honor that I can. So I just want to say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is, we have a few business meeting items to cover. On the 25th of June, we are unscheduled, the entire elected body minus Commissioner Pearson, will be in Ocean City along with our staff for the Maryland Municipal League Conference. So we're going to have to cancel the 25th. So we'll be canceling the meeting on that evening. Moving into the joint public hearing for the town comprehensive plan, Calvin, do you have that for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to, we wanted to publicly let folks know that the planning commission has finished the town's comprehensive plan. And as required for by law, the planning commission has to have a public hearing on that comp plan once we receive comments back from the Maryland Department of Clearinghouse. It is optional for the elected body to have a public hearing, meaning the elected body could just accept the findings of the planning commission. The elected body has 90 days in which to review the recommendation. However, since the elected body and the planning commission have been working so closely on this, it is suggested that the planning commission and the elected body have a joint public hearing on Tuesday, June 18 at 6:30 PM. The planning commission would have their public hearing, would conclude that hearing with a recommendation to the elected body, and then the elected body would open up their public hearing on the matter and with the ability to vote on accepting that recommendation, modifying that recommendation, delaying approval of that recommendation, or rejecting the recommendation. So again, the joint hearing will be on Tuesday, June 18 at 6:30 PM.
All right. Thank you. Do we need a formal motion from the board to do that on the 18th?
Not technical, you don't.
Okay.
No, because you're required to let the public know about that, so that's what we're doing at this meeting here.
So next on the agenda is the discussion of our records retention program. Do you have that as well?
Okay, yes. So in the state of Maryland, there technically, and I say this cautiously, there is technically a requirement for municipalities to have a records retention program. However, what we have known for several years now is that although the state has a requirement, and there are 157 recognized municipalities in the state of Maryland, there's a very small handful that actually do any type of records retention program. Now, that's not to say that communities are getting rid of their records. It just means that they are sort of following their own process for maintaining those records. One of the things that the state basically requires is certain records are to be kept permanently for all time, and those records are to go to the, I'm going to call it a state clearinghouse, or the archives for those. The individual municipalities have the right to determine the retention time of other paper records. And what you would take into consideration would be IRS guidelines on certain financial records, auditing records, and stuff like that. But for the most part, municipalities are free to set their own timeline on how long they want to retain those records. But under the state law, even if the municipality decides to dispose of those records, let's say hypothetically after three years, the state archives still request that all those records be sent to the state so that they can archive them, with the goal of having an archive of all, you know, records about government. As I said before, there aren't a whole lot of municipalities that are actually doing that. And so what you have in your packets is basically a schedule at this point. It's preliminary because we have to send it to the state archives for them to review and sign off on that schedule. So within that schedule, you will see certain things that are suggested to be retained for, you know, a permanent record, and other things that are suggested to be shorter time. Once the state signs off on that, we then would be recommended to pass an ordinance to establish this records retention program. Now, this is the staff's suggestion to the elected body, is that although you can pass an ordinance that has an automatic time limit that says, let's say hypothetically, we're getting rid of certain records, maybe its correspondence after a three-year period, just to be hypothetical, although you could pass an ordinance that says every three years the staff is instructed to just dispose of it, I think it is a good process. And from what I've seen from my past experiences, that at the very least, we come to a town meeting that has a list of those records that follow a schedule, and then the elected body has sort of a last, a right of a last reprieve to say, okay, you can dispose of those records, instead of it just being boilerplate that the staff gets rid of them. I think it's important for the elected body. Now, with all that said, every record that we have will be scanned, and that is something that we have just recently invested with SureScan, and we are in the process of purchasing some high-end fast scanners. That every record that we have coming in the Town Hall that qualifies for either disposal or for permanent records, there will be a permanent archive in our database for that. So even though we talk about destroying the paper copy, we still will have actually two electronic copies, one that will be kept offsite, and then another that will be backed up by CDs or DVDs on a periodic basis. They could either be kept here at Town Hall or kept in a safe deposit box somewhere. So the town will always have an electronic copy of all of its records, even if it disposes of the permanent, or the paper copy. That is above and beyond, to some degree, what the state requires, meaning that in some instances, the state says, okay, go ahead and dispose of your other records that we don't want to have permanently, but they're not requiring us to have a digital copy of those records that we, that are not deemed as important, but we do want to keep them. So basically, we're going to be saving electronically 100%, just about, of all of our records here. With that, to give you an idea, I didn't get a chance to talk to Judy. Judy, how, we've already started to scanning, and to date, about how many pages have we been able to scan?
11,000.
So we've already scanned 11,000 documents in a little over about two weeks' time, week and a half.
Week and a half.
Yeah, week and a half's time. So we're getting a lot of inroads into getting a lot of our digital files. Today, we were looking at town meeting minutes dating back to the 1930s, which was really interesting to look at. So it's exciting to see that progress, and the staff is doing a great job of compiling that. Judy, is there anything you wanted to add to the records retention portion?
I just wanted to add that it was very impressive to watch. I was in here today watching documents that were written on a typewriter or handwritten on notebook paper, being scanned in. And to see that retention program really come together that quickly is very impressive.
Well, I do want to add one thing. The most interesting thing about it is that when they're scanned, they are also, you can search them by word. So we've got years and years of data out there now that if you, let's say you want to look up Marion, for instance, and you just put in a text search for Marion, every time your name has appeared in a document, it will automatically retrieve that document. And it's just amazing to watch it work, so.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but I'll give you not to belittle your name, Mayor.
Thanks.
But, you know, we all know that the Montgomerys have had a long history here. We've had Montgomerys that have served on planning commissions, Board of Appeals, developers. When we typed in just the word Montgomery, it was amazing the number of documents that came back. I mean, we're talking hundreds of documents that it's able to find the word Montgomery, and we did not type the word Montgomery in on those things. So it's incredibly robust. As a side note, because the town is what, about 158 years old now, I think we did send an email to the vendor today saying, everything's going good, but we're having a problem feeding the stone tablets into the scanner here. Do you have a workaround for that to scan the stone tablets, so?
All right. Do you have an update on the customer web portal?
Yeah. With that, I'm going to, I'm going to bring it up on the screen so everyone can look at. And I'm going to turn it over to Judy. But basically, what this is, is we've done a lot of upgrades to the CUSI, which is our utility billing. And the new attributes are incredibly robust and give our constituents even more opportunities to manage their bill, see their history, get information about their accounts. So with that, I'll turn it over to Judy to take that.
Well, thank you, Calvin. I really think the thing to focus on is that we are now using our billing system as a customer service system and the fact that in the past, we've never encouraged people to go out and to set up an account and share with them what features and benefits are there for them. So we're going to put a recap in this month's billing statement that tells them, you know, we have upgraded the system, it's more robust than it's ever been. To help you with answering questions, please start using the system, because I think there was a fear of passwords and people not being able to log in. But in working with the staff, we're now ready to support that, so we're going to start encouraging the use. They do not have to use Quick Pay to be able to go out and take a look. If they forget their bill, or if they're worried about their bill, just go out there. And it's also mobile now. They can do it on their phone. In the past, you couldn't. You had to be near a PC. So these are all things that are going to make it a much better tool for the residents to use to help them manage their water account. So we're excited about that.
Calvin, anything else?
Is the next on the agenda the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to segue into that for a second. We introduced it at the last town meeting, some of our staff reporting that we're doing, because we've been doing a lot of ornamentation to track things. And I wanted to bring up something that I think is irrelevant, I'm going to turn it over to Judy here in a second. But in terms of the type of complaints that we get, we have been able to really streamline our billing process. So as you can see during this time period of April 1st to April 30th, we had four billing issues to resolve. Moving down, we had three sewer complaints and two water issues. So, you know, knock on wood, the system and the level of service to our residents is really improving because now we're able to quantify, or quantitate, the type of things that we have coming in. So, you know, what you're looking at is basically 141 inbound calls to the Town of Rising Sun and a breakdown on that. We'll, what we'll probably do is, I'm not a big fan of miscellaneous numbers, so maybe what Judy and I would do is try to delve into that to maybe see if we could figure out a way to divide out that miscellaneous.
We've already done that. That's going to be on the next report.
Okay.
But a lot of it is like someone calls in and they want to know about sun tests, or they're talking, so a lot of it is not necessarily what you would call a customer service follow-up situation.
Okay.
But anything that requires customer service follow-up is definitely has a category.
Okay.
But we are breaking that out, the miscellaneous out, to where if there's anything that we start seeing that there's a pattern that we can do a category on that we're doing in.
Okay.
So next month, it should, it should break out to where it's not 70% of the calls are coming in as miscellaneous, that we've been able to further break them out.
So with that, why don't you take up the report? And the one thing I know that the video guy might be asking is if you can, if you can move over to the microphone.
Okay.
To make sure the people at home can hear.
All right. Well, a lot of the things that me and the team do, we're looking at projects that will help bring us further into, I guess, the electronic age, records retention being one of them, and Calvin, you went over it really well. We're also reviewing our phone systems and looking for network synergies and things that may help us to improve our network and how we're being serviced with that. Utility billing, utility billing has really improved for us to where now we get our readings, we can print. We were finished with utility billing within an hour and a half to two hours, and then we're able to get everything stuffed and out in the mail same day. So I don't know if you know or are aware that we also started, we did away with the postcard, and we send everything first-class mail, which gives us an opportunity to communicate even further with the residents. We did bill out $107,000 on April 30th. We billed 4,000, 4,473 gallons. What we do now is we track what we're actually getting from Chester Water, and we try to make sure that there's not a loss of water beyond a certain acceptable level, and Calvin's aware of all that stuff. Collections, we started a collections program, and it's been really been, it's been beneficial, and it's helping us to reduce the stages of delinquency that we have. I'll give you an example, when we do penalties now, there's a feature in there that allows us to print past due invoices. So we do that just as a reminder that, hey, you may want to take a look, you may have not gotten your original bill, because we do get a lot of return mail sometimes. When looking at accounts that were contacted for payment that were also on that list, we're having a really great return from those. Looking at methods of payment, if you look at the percentages of payments that we get from cash, sometimes when we're considering maybe we shouldn't do cash payments, 8%, and that's a historic average, come in as cash payments. Are we also with the web? 21%. We average around 20% to 22% every month, month over month. So those are both really good ways of getting the money in quicker. Permit processing, we had eight new permits that we did this past month. I wanted to add that because sometimes I think that all of the services that we provide may not be fully understood in the volumes of those. I did a study of our, it's called a daily general ledger processing. Went to a database for that, and so wanted to do an analysis of that database to look at what have we done since we started this, just this fiscal year? And if you look at the revenue streams that we touch every week, and you look at the volumes of payments that have come in for them, you realize that that's a lot of information that's being handled and processed. We've processed $155,000 through general ledger just in this past fiscal year. Any questions about that, or any, anything else that you think you'd like to start seeing follow-up on? I'd be glad to add that to the staff reporting. I will tell you, great staff. Attendance is great, and they really apply themselves to what they're doing.
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing to highlight. Judy talked about the penalty program. We've had the penalty program in place for a couple of years, and I think it's important to remind residents that the Town of Rising Sun did not create the penalty program as a way of generating extra money. We created the penalty program to basically balance out the discount program that we provide to people, that if they, if they help us with cash flow, we use the penalty payments to offset the fact that we're actually giving people a discount for paying early. But what is also more important that Judy had highlighted is that we are not sitting back, per se, and waiting for people to get to the penalty phase where we're assessing the penalties. We are now tracking troubled accounts, and we are, after this past month, we've started calling people, saying, hey, you're on the verge of getting into this 10% penalty here. Is there anything we can do to help? And so we are the only community in Cecil County that provides a discount for early payment. We are the only community that offers payment plans to people. So I just want to emphasize, we're not in the business of trying to make money on this. We're trying to make sure that overall, the residents are well represented by people paying in a timely manner. So it's, it's a nice balance. I'm happy with the balancing act that we're doing right now with that. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Citizens' input tonight, would anyone like to speak this evening? All right. Ms. Wagner?
You have two books in front of you. The fatter book is January through March, and then due to some unforeseen circumstances, we canceled a town meeting, and we now have April ready for you. So if you go to the smaller book, that will be April by itself, and you will see the report, which was dated May 17. And then you will have the table of contents, and then you will have the statement of net positions. And I'm going to sit here and try and read this, but I will tell you right now, I started some new medicine this weekend, and everything is a little blurry. So if I misquote a number, I am sorry. Your cash and cash equivalent unrestricted is $74,494.49. Your investments is $89,454.33. Your receivables of tax and services is $142,795.83. Due from other governments is $19,118. Due from other funds, which is the proprietary, is $668,903.55. And other receivables is $8,202.75. You have cash and cash equivalent of restricted funds, and basically, the majority of that is the hookup fees for the first, you've only done one project so far, correct? Of $84,669.41. Once we have finalized and all the bank accounts are set up between government water and sewer, that money will then be dispersed out. But right now, it's all sitting in the government checking account. You have accounts payable and accrued expenses of $528.96, and that's basically payroll liabilities. So then you will come down, and your net position has and your net position has two categories now, where last month or a month ago, we, this is new when we got the restricted money in. So now you have $84,669.41. That is restricted and unrestricted. You have $1,2439.99. Any questions with regard to the statement of net position? Okay, we will go to the next page, which is page five, and you will see all your different funds across here, the different categories, and your total revenue is $1,740,165.21. And as I remind you each time I come, remember that the real estate taxes is all accrued July 1st, so this money has to get us through till the end of June. Our expenses so far is $1,309,736.1 for the change of net position to be $430,429.20. So we are in the good by that amount. So that brings our total net position to $1,087,109.40. Any questions with regard to the statement of revenue expenditure and change in net position? The one that I know you all like is in the supplemental, which is the budget to actual, so that you can see how each of the funds are doing. And I'm sure the chief likes to know that he is in the positive by $79,000, which is good. And the government is over by $9,000. Planning and zoning is, reading down here, is in the good by the budget. And then you have public works. And then we'll just keep going on. The next page, you'll have streets and sidewalks, solid waste, parks and recreation, debt services. And then we'll go to the very last page and look at the total. So we are positive to the revenue by $33,802.85. And we are positive to expenditures, meaning we spent less than we planned to at this point in the year, which we're 10 months in, by $185,830.29 for an over-positive effect of $219,633.14. So we're doing very good budget to actual. Any questions with regard to that? So then we go to the proprietary, and that's the one that's not as nice-looking as the government, but. And we'll go to page four. Cash and cash equivalent unrestricted is $2,116,548.19. One of the big things that we tried to do in May, because the auditor does not like to see all the money owed between the government and the proprietary and between water and sewer, and this year, we actually had some money, because we weren't in the middle of a big spending project, is that we started to pay off the receivables between all the different entities. And right now, there is only one entity that owes another entity, plus whatever payrolls happened for the month of May. And our goal is that when we hit June, that we pretty well, we might have a payroll, because there's going to be a payroll that happens at the very end, but that there's very, very little. Because this has probably been one of the things that I would say the auditor has not liked for the past couple of years, but when you're in as big of a project as you were in with the sewer and then the water, the money came from the government was being loaned to the various different funds. So you're going to see these numbers change a lot when we hit the May statement. The service charge receivables total between water and sewer is $416,110.26. Amount due from other funds is $363,978.54. Due from other governments, which is meaning outside of the Town of Rising Sun, is $236,956. So our total current assets is $3,133,592.99. We have restricted cash of $70,922.54. And we have net capital assets, which is basically in the proprietary, the assets are depreciated. It's the assets less the accumulated depreciation of $26,587,209.89. Amounts due to other governments, and that's basically the Bay Restoration, of $23,522.78. We pay the Bay Restoration every quarter. Amounts due to other funds, which is within water owed the government about $800,000, the sewer owed the government about $203,000, for a total of $1,032,882.9. The debt on our infrastructure is $20,709,370.12. Accrued compensation, because it's proprietary, we have to accrue the PTO and sick leave and different things like that, and that's $20,364. And then the Southern State escrow is $10,000. The total current liabilities and long-term liabilities is $21,795.778.63. When we get down to net position, we have three categories. Net investment and capital asset, and that's basically your net assets minus your liabilities, not all the liabilities. We're not going to put accrued wages in there, but the liabilities toward those assets. And that is $5,877,839.77. The restricted total is $70,922.54. Unrestricted is $2,478,184.48. Any questions about the statement of net position? Then we will go over to page five, which is the statement of revenue expenditures and change in net position for the proprietary fund. This is 10 months. Total revenue is $1,222,575.74. The expenditures is $1,695,029.24 for a negative operating loss of $472,453.50. And as I tell you all, if you're really looking at real life and the cash flow, you need to add depreciation back, which is $731,749.84. Then we have non-operating income and expenditures, connection and improvement charges, and that's not all connection and improvement charges. That's also where the money is coming from MDE. Of $1,430,735.3, interest and investment income of $14,053.54. And then obviously, we have the interest expense, that is $191,743.49. So the net of that is $1,253,045.8, which actually puts us in a, sorry, guys, I lost my train of thought here. It brings us in a negative cash flow of $780,591.58. Any questions there?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So then we're going to look at water budget to actual, and you can look at those numbers, and then water sewer budget to actual, and you have your variance, and then you have total budget to total actual. So the revenue is actually $195,780.41 higher than what we had budgeted. The expenditures are $331,325.45 lower than we had budgeted for a positiveness to the budget of $527,105.86, operating loss, because we had budgeted almost a million, and we ended up only losing $472,000. And remember, depreciation is a non-cash item, and that's $731,000. We get down to the, you know, we received the money from MDE that put a, improved it even more than what it was. So when we got down to any questions with regard to that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. And you all know, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
Thank you. We hope that you feel better.
Oh, I'm sure I will. Getting used to something new.
Chief?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. During the period from May 14th through May 28th, we responded to 70 calls for service. That doesn't provide an accurate picture, because we still are having the state and county assist us with our daily patrols. So those numbers are just a skewed picture of what is still happening. The Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention has awarded us $32,000 for the state aid for police protection. That's always great to have come to the town to offset some of the costs for your law enforcement. In addition, I lost my train of thought also. You rubbing off on me, Patty? I think it's this podium. I'm not going to touch it anymore. But over the next coming days, you're going to start seeing notices come out about the traffic direction and road closures for Sunfest, which is this Saturday. I know the last time I posted something online, there were many comments about how the routes have changed and things. No, they have not. There's nothing changed about the route of our parades or our runs. What has changed is we're finding better routes of travel for the motoring public, and we're advising you of that. So nothing has changed about length of closures, routes of travel. We're just giving you a better detoured route around. With that being said, there hasn't been much else happening in the police department.
Chief, will other jurisdictions and fire police be assisting?
Absolutely.
Traffic control this week?
Absolutely. The fire police has been committed for a lifetime, according to the fire captain. He said, as long as he's there, that they will be assisting us with every, you know, event we have, whatever traffic direction needs. Other law enforcement agencies have stepped up to assist us. So as usual, the relationships continue. They're great, and I look forward to working with those guys.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator, do you have a report?
Yes. One of the things I wanted to cover, because we sort of have been covering some of the items as a budget. The elected body, as we all know, had voted to lower the taxes, and we are still on schedule to do that. There's a delay in actually producing the final budget, because as always, we're waiting for numbers for insurance policies. And although we have earmarked an estimated number, we just want to narrow it down. The other thing that I wanted to piggyback on, some of the things that Patty was talking about, is our numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, our numbers will even do better, because we have a large chunk of money still due from USDA.
Yes.
To reimburse us. So, and I believe that number's like $500,000. It's a high number. So our numbers are depressed in the report, because we already paid for those expenses, and we're waiting for USDA to reimburse us. So those numbers will improve also. Along with some of the budget discussions, is I did meet with the engineer about a week and a half ago to go over some proposed paving locations and streets and sidewalks. And we are putting together a very robust plan to repave some of our streets that are in need of it, but we're also trying to juggle it with the fact that some of those streets in the older section of town have undersized 4-inch water lines in them. And so we don't want to do what happens a lot of times in government, where you pave the road, and six months later, you come back and dig it up. So we're trying to coordinate the timing of all that, which would include us applying for some grant money from MDE. We would qualify for some grant monies to replace some of those water lines. So although we are budgeting for it, we might not be able to get to the actual repaving until April, I'm sorry, August, September, later on in the year. Economic development is still very exciting right now in the Town of Rising Sun. We are getting a lot of inquiries about stuff. The mayor had even talked today about, and I know this is something that he's talked about quite often, is that our houses that are in good shape, and that's an important word for our residents, if your properties are kept up to par and looking good, there is a high demand for those properties in this community. They are going on the market, and within some cases, within four hours of going on the market, offers are being made. In other cases, we have houses that are only on the market for a week or two before agreement of sale. So this is a place that people want to move to. So keeping your properties up can go a long way for you really realizing the value in return if there should be a reason why you need to sell and move. With that said, we, and I know it could be in part due to the rainy weather that we've gotten, but we have seen an increase in the number of complaints about high grass. And although we are trying to be flexible with people, of trying to dodge raindrops to cut the grass, one thing we do need to remind people is you can't take that high grass and cut it and just blow it out on the sidewalk or blow it out into the street. Number one, it's a pretty lazy way to do that. It doesn't look very good for the block when all that grass is laying out there. The other item is that's not good for our stormwater system either. That grass goes down into the stormwater drains and causes problems for us at the same time. So we just want to ask people that we're trying to be supportive of, you know, giving people the opportunity to cut that high grass, but don't just get irritated because you were told you had to cut it and blow it all out into the street and the sidewalk, because that causes problems all the way around also. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Going into my report, I do have a brief statement that I'm going to read on behalf of the board. It says that the town previously issued a statement on a matter through our police chief. It is important to allow the state agencies to conclude their investigation into the matter. The board will not be making any statements, nor will the board entertain any comments or questions for the immediate future. Thank you for your understanding and patience at this time. So moving into the mayor's report, I did want to say a huge thank you to WXCY, who came and delivered pizzas to our police department. I thought that that was very nice of them in honor of National Police Week. They came and-
Brad Austin's pretty cool, too.
Yes, Brad Austin came and spent some time with us and brought pizza for the police department, but they did not share with me, so. I also wanted to update everyone on the condition of our main street. As you know, our main street is a state highway Route 273. We are currently in talks with the state highway administration on what their plan is moving forward. I know I speak for our entire elected body when we say that we are not happy with the condition of our main street at this time, and we will be working hard to try to fix that as we move into the summer. The engineer's office has been talking with us, and we're trying to come up with a fix that will benefit not only the town, but also state highway as well. Moving into economic development, you may have seen, or may have not, that another business- uh, that another business is getting ready to come to our main street. For the past few years, myself and our elected body, uh, continue to talk to you about the condition of our main street and economic revitalization. We were simply waiting for the right person to take that chance on main street. You've seen the success of Rise and Grind, and I'm excited to see this new business come. Um, so the first new business that will be entering the Old Western Auto location is called The Art Den. They will be holding art classes, paint nights, pottery demos, and much more. Uh, they have a Facebook site that you can check them out, uh, for details on memberships and drop-in events. Their grand opening, which we will be a part of, uh, is planned for this fall, September the sixth. And the other business that is going to enter the other, uh, portion of Western Auto will be announced, uh, in the months to come. We are super excited about our main street, um, and, uh, what is a revitalization coming alive. It's been many years, uh, over a decade for it to happen. Um, so we're excited to be a part of it, um, and excited to have you all a part of it as well. As you know, Sunfest is this weekend. It's always a great event, uh, for myself and our elected body. We will be there. Um, in addition to Sunfest, there's also a parade that starts the event, uh, which we will also be a part of. So we hope to see you there, um, and hope for a beautiful day for Sunfest this Saturday. Moving into Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Althanreth.
First of all, I wanna piggyback on something Calvin said. When it comes to cutting grass, cleaning up your yard and all, don't forget, every Monday, our Public Works guys pick up yard waste. So just take a little extra time, if you can, bag up the grass, put it out there in some, uh, recycle-type bags, and they'll pick it up and dispose of it. And if the bags aren't damaged, they'll leave them for you. They dump it into a trailer and they'll leave them, so you can use them again. You don't have to go out and buy new ones. So, and if you have any branches or anything, uh, Judy and her staff has sent out a leaflet with the water bills here in the early spring about what's acceptable size and weight and, you know, bundle it up. And they do this year-round, so just take a little extra time. Because you blow it out in the street and everything, like you said, it gets into the storm drains, but it's also very dangerous for motorcycles, you know? Everybody up here loves to ride. We got a lot of places everybody goes, and that, uh, grass out on the street is very slick, believe it or not. So take a little extra time and have our guys pick it up and dispose of it. So on the water and sewer end, our Chester Water Project is essentially complete. Uh, personnel have worked very hard through the winter to take care of some, uh, water main breaks and other little bugs in the system that they've been working out. Uh, they're also working on the timing of filling the, the tank in the evening hours when the demand is much less, uh, so to make sure we have adequate turnover of the water that's coming in. Also, uh, the Maryland Department of Environment has a minimum standard for required water testing. We've been going above and beyond that to make sure that our water's safe, clean, properly balanced, uh, that we don't have any kind of anomalies coming up that, um, could affect it. And we plan to do that for the future, uh, not just settle for the standard minimum, uh, testing on that. So that's, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. Commissioner Pearson.
Just add something with what Alan said, but it's also illegal to blow your grass out into the street. So, uh, if it gets to be a problem, let us know, and, uh, we will deal with that. Outside of that, other than Sunfest on Saturday and the traffic, I have, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Warnock.
So, uh, first, I apologize for stepping out a few times. I've had, uh, Sunfest vendors calling me all day.
Last minute.
So, uh, that, one of those was, um, a restaurant that many people will be very happy to find out it's coming, so, uh, or maybe coming towards a later part of the day, let's say, when their lunch menu kicks in, from Elkton. Uh, so, Sunfest this year, we have, uh, the marshal for the parade is, uh, Josie Perry, the Rising Sun High School Teacher of the Year. We're really excited to, uh, to have her as our parade marshal. So, uh, we think it's great that, uh, Rising Sun High School is represented by such great educators and, and, uh, since she was Teacher of the Year, we asked her and she accepted. So, um, the parade will start promptly at nine AM. Uh, the municipal parking lot, as the chief and I were talking earlier, will close at five PM on Friday. Uh, that is, that's partially becau- it's, part of it'll close at five PM on Friday, and then the remainder will close around nine PM. The reason we closed that portion early is due to, uh, the food vendors that set up. It's be, it's very disruptive for them to get the trailers in in the morning, so they set up the night before. So you'll see notifications going out in the municipal lot pertaining to that. Uh, we have currently around seventy-eight vendors. We've, I got some insight this year, um, a lot of vendors are reluctant to sign up for things until the very last minute due to rain, I don't know, I guess. So we've had a flood of vendors coming in the last few days. I, I think we may wind up, you know, probably up closer to ninety when it's all said and done, uh, based on some of the inquiries we've been getting, so, um, it, it's making it very hard right now to figure out how to place people in the event, because as we get a bunch more vendors, it means we have to open new sections. And so we're, we're struggling a little bit with getting everybody placed, so. Uh, if anybody, vendors are watching this, be patient. We're working on trying to get it all worked out so that everybody gets optimal amount of traffic. And, uh, with that, the parade starts at nine AM, the, the, uh... Yeah, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Is it nine forty-five, and then the entertainment starts around, uh, ten AM? Um, and the, uh, Sunfest is actually from about ten to four, um, you know, weather permitting, as we found out last year. Right. So North Queen closes early, as well as Pearl Street. Uh, Pearl Street from the intersection up to Howard Bank. Uh, I also remind people not to park in Howard Bank, uh, unless you wanna be towed. So, uh, they, until noon, there's no parking in either PNC or Howard Bank. Um, they are operational during, uh, you know, their normal business hours, nine to about eight to noon. And, uh, every year, we have trouble with people parking in those parking lots and not allowing their customers anywhere to park. So, um, I think that's the majority of what we have. It's gonna be an exciting day. Uh, it looks, the weather right now looks good. Yeah, so, um...
It's still early.
Chop, Augie. So we're, uh, we're excited and we expect it to be another good event, so, thank you.
And movies in the park will be released at the next town meeting. Uh, I'm still working with Commissioner Warnock on locations and movie choices, so. Um, can, I'm actually not gonna ask for a motion, because we are going to enter into an executive session that will start at eight fifteen. Okay, go ahead. The elected body will be moving into an executive session on the second floor following this meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss personnel and acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Uh, upcoming events and meetings, uh, the planning commission will meet on Monday, June the third at six-thirty. Uh, our next town meeting will be Tuesday, June eleventh at seven PM. The joint public hearing of the town comprehensive plan will be Tuesday, June eighteenth at six-thirty. Then the next town meeting, which would be due June twenty-fifth, we canceled due to the MML conference. Upcoming events, the American Legion will host their annual Memorial Day ceremony on Memorial Day, May thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven AM. Then Sunfest is this Saturday, June first, and then the MML conference will be from June twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. Upcoming holidays, July fourth is the one that's listed, which is a Thursday. So the elected body will be moving into that executive session at eight fifteen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing on a personal note, okay? If I could, uh, a good friend of mine is a bag piper that I work with in the fire department. Now, his name's Bob McCurdy. He has been asked and is on his way now to Normandy to be a bag piper at the ceremony on, uh, June the sixth, and he's representing Maryland. So I just remembered that, that I wanted to say something that's really positive for us. Thank you.
Thank you.